I'll call to order the May 28, 2009, City of Wood Dale Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Shawkey.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
We have a quorum present. The first item, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14, 2009 meeting?
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. The next item, basically gonna hand it right over to John Forrest as a report and recommendation on the Community Development Administrative Adjudication Hearings. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 2008-2009 budget allocated $15,000 to fund a one-year trial program of the Administrative Adjudication Hearings Program, which we were going to use to process citations issued out of the Community Development Department as opposed to taking the violators to court in Addison. Unfortunately, the program has not quite turned out as we had hoped at the time. It was anticipated the program would not only be self-sustaining, but revenue generating as well. What we found is that the majority of the citations that are issued, the defense that is typically offered by the offenders is that they don't have the money or the resources to correct the violation at this time. I don't think it's any secret that Wood Dale is suffering the effects of the downturn of the economy, and as noted in my memo to you, as of May 21st, per Realty Track Services, there are now 226 foreclosed properties in Wood Dale. So that's doubled in, what, about three months, I believe, Mayor, since our last report? So, there was a six-month review by the city council. There were several questions raised at that time, but the decision was to continue the program for six more months. At that time, the program was about $2,000 in the black. At this point in time, the program is about $2,500 in the red. When I was researching this report, I did find some memos from staff that actually date back to last September, at that time recommending that we should think about stopping the adjudication program because it was just not effective. We've discovered over the last year that there's been more staff time spent preparing and dealing with this process than there would have been with their normal monthly court dates and with fewer positive results. I talked to staff in preparing this report, and the main reasons that they feel the program is not effective is that, number one, the defendants are not appearing to the adjudication hearing. We're unable to collect the fines. People are just flat-out refusing to pay the fines that the adjudicator assesses. At times, the adjudicator would assess fines against people even though, at that time, they had brought the situation into compliance, so it was almost like a punitive fine being assessed against them. And it also appears as though some of the fines were assessed arbitrarily. There were different amounts assessed for the same type of violations to different parties. Analyzing the program in general, it was my decision to have staff stop issuing adjudication citations a few months ago and begin taking the violators back to the court system. It's, you know, it's felt by me that having an offender appear in front of an actual judge at an actual courthouse, somebody wearing a black robe, is a little more effective to get compliance than having an adjudicating attorney here in the city council chambers and having them appear in front of them. Seems to carry a little more weight. When somebody does have to go to the court system, there's a citation issued. A court date notice is sent to them. If they showed at the court date, the judge will typically make a decision, either issue a dollar fine or give them a required compliance date and they'll have to reappear. If they don't show, then a summons is issued. If they don't show again to court, a warrant is actually issued for their arrest. And there have been occasions that people have actually been arrested for property maintenance violations for not showing up for their court dates. So overall, we've found in the past that compliance, the percentage of compliance has been higher using the regular court system than the adjudication system. I would, I would still like to research some of the municipalities who feel that their programs are running successfully, perhaps interview additional adjudicators, review what they charge, and possibly revisit this program for the next budget year. At this point, it is my recommendation to discontinue the administrative adjudication hearings for community development.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Well, as you state, the program has not performed and is, in fact, losing money so far to the tune of $2,500. I'll just go ahead and make a motion to officially terminate the administrative adjudication program. I'll ask for a second and then I'll call the question. Is there any discussion on the subject? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings, the Unified Development Ordinance, which is the replacement to our thirty-some-year-old zoning ordinance. This is being worked on by Land Vision. That's all I have on future agendas. Would anybody like anything else added? Mr. Mayor?
I've already had the chance to talk to staff about it, but I'd like to make the council aware. One of the things I'd like the building department to look at with 226 foreclosed homes is an aggressive enforcement program, identifying those that have been foreclosed, making sure things like the grass is cut if they suffered flood damage, seeing if there's mold in it, and being aggressive on whether they need to be even to the point of condemnation if necessary. But I think that's something we have to keep a handle on to protect the whole neighborhood.
Very good. I agree with that. Anything anybody else would like to see in a future meeting? Yes, Alderman Lewitin.
I'd like to see the revisit and look over the vacant building ordinances.
Vacant building ordinances? Can either you elaborate or can John Forrest pick up?
Yes.
So we know we're going in the right direction?
Right. Maintenance of vacant buildings is currently dictated by the Property Maintenance Code, which talks about vacant structures, how they have to be maintained. At this point, to address sort of the point the mayor made, we are working with city services, and city services is getting some bids right now from private contractors. We're having a little more luck tracking down some of the responsible parties for the vacant properties and the foreclosed homes now, so it is something that's in process right now.
If it's in progress, that's fine. Can they bring their findings before the council or your committee?
I'm okay with it. And perhaps to even elaborate further on Alderman Lewitin's concept, perhaps we should look at any property maintenance ordinance line items that have to do with the maintenance of buildings in general, particularly, you know, vacant and the specific items that the mayor spoke of, and make sure that what we have in black and white as law is enough for staff to be able to work off of and try to keep the community clean and safe. Anything else? Hearing nothing, I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. That concludes my report.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee for May 28, 2009. Will the minute taker please reflect the same members present? I make a motion to approve minutes dated May 14, 2009. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Report and Recommendation for the Prepayment of IMRF Early Retirement. Mr. Manager, would you like to give us a brief background?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brad and Greg, if you guys could join me up here in case there are any questions that you can answer. I'd like to take both of these issues at the same time because they tie into each other. Let me give you a little bit of a background with respect to where we are with our two pension plans. All full-time employees, actually all employees who work 20 hours or more, are funded either through the Police Pension Fund or IMRF, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And I'd like to give you a little bit of a status in terms of where those are. The Police Pension Plan provides retirement benefits to our sworn officers. By state law, employees contribute 9.91% of their salary to the fund. Presently, the city's current contribution is 20% of covered payroll. We are not now fully funded in that pension plan. We're about 82% funded. And as the attached memo from Mr. Anderson, who's the president of the Police Pension Fund, there's an unfunded liability of about $5 million. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but it's only an issue if all of our 35 sworn officers were to retire or go out on disability at one given time, like tomorrow. And I talked to Deputy Chief Vesta earlier today, and he said there's probably only four or five police officers who may be looking to retire in the next four or five years. So that $5 million, although it sounds like a lot of money, is not really particularly an issue. The state law mandates that we fully fund that pension plan by the year 2033, 24 years from now. And as a matter of fact, there's a bill in the legislature that's floating around, we don't know if it'll be passed, that will reset the time clock and allow us a full 40 years to fund that. In 1993, the state says you've got 40 years to fund it completely. We're into 2009. Because of the situation with respect to the stock market and the equity markets, there's some discussion about resetting that time clock and giving us an extra 40 years. So although we're gonna have to step up our contributions in the next several years, in the next 23 years to fully fund that, it's not now a real cause for concern, but I need to bring that to your attention. And the Police Pension Board has asked us to begin stepping up our contributions over and above what the actuaries determine is necessary to get a handle and make up some of that difference. Then we come to the IMRF, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and all of our civilian employees with 20 hours or more are in that fund. Unlike the Police Pension Fund, that is required to be funded fully each year, 100%. The employees pay into the fund 4.5% of payroll, and our contribution is determined on an actuarial basis each year, depending upon length of service, amount of salary, and increase or decrease in the net asset value of our holdings. Two years ago, we paid in 10.48% of salary. In 2008, it was up to 14.15%, and this year it's 13.38%, and that number will fluctuate from year to year depending upon actuarial studies and how our, how our investments go. Now, IMRF suffered a significant decrease in the last year in their net asset value as a result of the stock market hit. And they told us several months ago that if we had to make up that fully funded amount next year, next calendar year, our contributions would, the city's contributions would rise by 79%, which was an enormous hit, and which a number of cities said, "We can't afford that kind of a, of a hit to the contribution." And IMRF has come back and said, "All right, we're gonna allow you to increase your contribution by 10% a year until you get back to full 100% funding over the next several years." So we can expect a 10% increase per year in our employer contributions to IMRF. And we don't know how long it'll take to get back to fully funding. That's really a function of the stock market, the equity market, and, you know, how our investment goes. So that's something to keep in mind for the years to, several years to come. Now, the third part of this is the early retirement incentive program that we entered into in, I believe it was 2006, Brad? 2005. In 2005, we adopted an early retirement incentive program to allow some of our employees to opt out and retire earlier than they normally would have. And the theory and the rationale behind that was, "Let's get rid of some of the older, more highly-paid employees and replace them with younger employees at the bottom of the pay scale and save ourselves some money." And that was successful. However, to buy into that early retirement program, we had to commit ourselves to funding that obligation of ours over the next five or six years. And as of today, our obligation is about $721,000 to be paid over six years. And as you see on the second page of my memo, the amortization schedule, we would have to amortize about $130,000 to $200,000 a year in principal over the next six years, and interest of between $58,000 declining to $15,000 over the next six years, for a total interest cost in that obligation of $217,000. Now, I liken that to a second mortgage on your house. We've got a $721,000 obligation that we have to pay off over six years at seven and a half percent interest. And our money in reserve is making probably no more than 1.2% interest a year. And it seems to me to be prudent to take the $721,000 out of our general fund reserve, prepay that debt, save ourselves $215,000 in interest earnings, and wipe that obligation off the books, much as you would just pay off your second mortgage, if you will. And my recommendation would be that we take the savings in interest earnings over the next six years and apply that toward the Police Pension Fund to start building up that, to lessen that unfunded liability. And the principal savings, we put back into the general fund reserve to buttress that $721,000 that we take out right now. In a nutshell, that's my recommendation. Members of the Police Pension Board and the Finance Director here to answer any questions you have, and I'll turn it over to you all for any questions that you might have.
Well, what I'm gonna do is, to keep order, I'm gonna first make a motion on item number four, for prepayment of IMRF early retirement. So I'm gonna make a motion that the City of Wood Dale pay off its $721,000 obligation immediately. Is there a second, and then I'll ask for questions?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Alderman Lewitin?
Okay. My thinking is that you're giving money to the IMRF, who then blows the money by bad investing and then expects you to pay the difference. You make 100% contrib-
I just wanna make sure we're on the right topic. The IMRF was the early retirement where, back three, four years ago, people, employees left, and then there's a debt placed on that. We're not talking about the Police Pension Fund and this motion. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am not talking about the Police Pension Fund.
Okay.
I'm looking right at the report from City Manager Wally Douthwait. It says, "Irma has informed us that the net assets has declined significantly due to the equity market's decline, and that we should expect our contribution to increase by up to 70% beginning in calendar year 2010." Okay. Our liability is going to increase over the next several years, barring a sharp turnaround in the equity market, which means to me that every time they lose in the stock market, they're gonna come back and ask for more money because they're gonna have a deficit. That begs the question, why do we have a defined benefit program and not a defined contribution program? Because if we had a defined contribution program, they would be more responsible in handling the money, and they would also have the opportunity to increase their retirement benefits by beating the market average and making more money. Why don't we negotiate with the IMRF for a defined contribution instead of a defined benefit program? Then we'd always have a defined contribution. We'd always be able to stay current with it. We'd never find out. They made a hole that we have to fill.
Mr. Manager, I'm gonna ask you to stick to the IMRF early retirement topic when you answer that.
Well, the short answer is because it's state law. We don't have any choice. There is indeed, right now, another bill that's floating around in Springfield that would allow state employees to, new state employees, to be covered under a defined contribution plan rather than a defined benefit plan. That's one of the reforms that's been bandied about the last several weeks. But the plain fact of the matter is that we don't have any choice. We're in a defined benefit plan, and we can't do anything about that. It's not within our purview to go to a defined contribution plan. If it were my choice, I'd go to a defined contribution plan, but we're not, we don't have that, that liberty.
He's answered the question, and, you know, I, I am a firm believer that, under the law, you should do what you have to do, and if that's to fund the program, it's better to save the $200,000 that you outlined. And, I mean, I support the plan to pay them off, and I would certainly vote yes. But what I wanted to bring up was if we could put some strings on it or put some lobbyists to work to change it, not just for our benefit, but for the retirees' benefit, because if they have enough years and the funds are invested prudently that a wise man would do, they could outperform what Irma's providing them and have a higher retirement fund. That's my position, and I'd like to turn the floor back over to who wants to speak next.
And that's the position of the Illinois Municipal League and the DePage Managers and Mayors Conference, both of which have gotten behind that piece of legislation that would allow new employees to be covered by a defined contribution as opposed to a defined benefit. But it's a function of getting it through the legislature.
Is there any other questions? Alderman, Roy Wesley?
I'd just like to know where we're taking this money, out of general fund or?
It's my understanding, general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We take it out of the general fund reserve. We've got about $9 million in reserves. My recommendation is we take $720,000 out of the reserve, pay this off, and then, over the next few years, as that obligation disappears, we replenish the reserve through the principal savings, and we take the interest savings and move that to the, to the Police Pension Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Police?
Just to be clear, are you gonna make another motion then? Where the money's gonna go after this motion? The interest?
Well, this motion is to fund the $721,000 to pay off the debt from the general fund. So it's-
So then we're gonna discuss the Police Pension and?
That's a whole separate topic.
Okay.
Yeah. If I had it, I would ask for two separate memos or pieces of document. Putting them together kinda convolutes the issue, but it's two separate discussions entirely. Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, then, there's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Item Report and Recommendation for the Police Pension Plan. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Mr. Manager to, I know you discussed it already, but do you wanna add anything to it?
No, the recommendation is to take the interest savings that we would've, that we'll save, and move that over to the Police Pension Fund to help pay down that unfunded liability.
Okay. Now, I imagine there's gonna be discussion of continuing just our standard? What is it? Standardly, we do 20% of payroll?
We, that's the normal amount, and that amounts to about $300,000 a year.
Okay.
Depending upon our financial situation, we may wanna up that in the following years to begin paying down that $5 million unfunded liability. The goal is, by 2033, to have that $5 million debt or liability paid down.
Okay.
Which other than, with, other than you and Alderman Cadella is probably long before or after our lifetimes.
Okay. So, given the market volatility and pretty much virtually, almost, anyone who's in the market is gonna have this volatility. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion, and probably it doesn't even need to be a motion, but just for the sake of conversation, to continue our standard operating procedure of funding how we currently are of the approximately 20% of payroll. Is there a second? And then I'm gonna look for a discussion. We'll have the discussion. Okay, so the motion and the second. Is there anything on the question, Mr. Mayor?
We've heard the manager's recommendation, with all due respect to the manager. Police Pension is a separately constituted board. We have a separate request from them for a much higher accelerated funding request, which we haven't addressed, where they're requesting that it be paid over a three-year period. Now, I think there have been some updates, and I don't think the damages are quite as bad as when this letter was issued, but I think we need to hear from the board as a separate constituted agency from the city as to what their request is.
Certainly the goal, myself as a member of the Pension Board, Officer Anderson, and also a future beneficiary of that, we want the pension fund to be in the most healthy shape that it can be in. We've discussed this as a board, and our recommendation is, our goal is to get fully funded, 100% funded. We understand that that can't happen necessarily in an immediate manner. There is provisions in the law to extend that out over the 24 years now. There's a chance that that will be extended to 40 years. What we look at each year is we go to an independent actuarial to go out, and he looks at our pension fund, our current salaries, our future increases, mortality rates, potential retirement dates, and he projects out how much the fund's gonna have to pay out on an ongoing basis. And then looks at how much is in the fund at the current time. That's where the unfunded liability comes from. It's that dollar amount. Part of that's calculated into the annual request to the city for that pension includes amortization of that unfunded liability of the $5 million, which is our last actuary report that we have. The next one will be coming in September or October this year. He'll be starting on it in July and August. So yes, the request was to fully fund, and we want to be fully funded at some point. But the Pension Board and the members as a whole are certainly satisfied that the members of the council and the citizens of Wood Dale have supported the Police Pension Fund. Whatever has been asked in the recent past from the actuarial that we requested, that was fully funded. But just understanding that this liability was out there, the request was made to the city to step up the contribution a little bit, we kinda defer to the city to how to best do that and what their priority for any funds that are in reserve should go.
Are there any other questions on the motion, Mr. Mayor?
Let me see if there's a middle ground. Is the current unfunded, then, is still $5 million, $20,000? Or has there been recovery of that?
Well, the last couple of months, we've seen some improvements in equities, but when this initial request was made, that was in the, I don't recall the date on it, but there was quite a bit of turbulence going on at that time, and I know we've had some, some fluctuations. The last couple of months, things have been much better for the fund. But as for an official actuarial study, the last one was done May 1 of '08. They'll be starting the new one, or it's funded as of May 1 of '08. The new one will be starting, and it kinda works, it was conducted about a year ago now, actually about eight months ago now. The new one will be going on, starting the next couple of months, and then that'll be, you know, his outside actuarials estimate of, hey, where are we at as of April 30th, '09? And what is the pension fund? What is it recommended that they request from the city to fund the future liabilities out there? So, does that clear it up a little bit?
Let me try this a different way.
You know, the last couple of months, I know we, we've had, I think, over $800,000 in increased fund balance, but there was also, in late fall last year, some decrease in fund balance. So that's kind of a floating number as far as what the unfunded liability is. The fund balance is about $14.13 million right now. That can be a hard number, but what he's gonna say this time is, the unfunded liability, we don't have an official number, so.
Let me get to my point. Let me get to my point. At the, at the manager's rate of funding, does that amortize the $5 million over the 24 years, or do we need to set a higher figure? Realizing the market's going to fluctuate and your investments will fluctuate, but taking the $5 million as a fact as the current unfunded liability, at that rate of contribution he's suggesting, is that amortized over the 24 years?
It is. That's part of the annual request to the city, includes some amortization of that unfunded liability. If the unfunded liability, as of April 30th, which, you know, just recently passed, goes up, the amortization amount over those 24 years is going to go up a little bit in addition to the-
So what is the contribution amount we're talking about on a yearly basis, over and above the tax levy?
It is-
What is the manager pro, I didn't quite catch what the figure was.
About $3,000 or $10,000, I believe.
Per year?
Per year.
Oh, okay. That's fine with me.
Alderman Police?
Quick question. Right now, we just, basically, we paid the $700,000 on the early retirement, and next year, we're going to have this interest and whatnot that we're no longer going to pay.
Can you turn your microphone on if it's not on?
Oh, sorry. I thought I had it on. Sorry. So, basically, we're not going to do anything with this until next year, right? So this would become a budget item for next year?
That's correct.
So if we just went with the regular motion that's on the table right now, we don't have to do anything?
Well, we would, we'd probably pay it off as of the 1st of June, which would allow us to escape some of the interest payments for the rest of the, the calendar year. So if, when the motion was made earlier tonight, then that gave direction to the Finance Director to pay that off right away, and we would save ourselves the interest earnings or the interest costs for the rest of the year.
Police Pension. We're, we're talking Police Pension.
Right. But my thing was, being that we're saving the $60,000, I think where the manager was going was, $60,000, we would use that money to go towards a Police Pension next year, or, and year 2010, $51,900. That's, is that what-
You could either do that right away, or you could wait until next fiscal year. That's really your call.
Right.
And, and I would say that then, any type of interest saved would go towards the 20% obligation. Alderman Coles?
I believe that we should take the $217,910 and 83 cents and put it right in the pension right now, in the Police Pension right away. And then, that way, we have something to figure out after that, and then we can always add to it. And that's what I think we, you want to do, right?
We can do that.
That's what I, I believe we should do.
And we can put it towards the 20%. Alderman Police?
Again, basically, you also said-